The initiative tonight is to bring awareness to the community about the danger of opioid and other drugs. Our youth are vulnerable, and it's a growing problem in Michigan. We want to bring it to the attention of our community to see how they can deal with it, give them some literature. We have great speakers here tonight to shed some light on the problem.
What else can we do besides spreading awareness of the opioid problem?
Spread the word over and over and over. And we have to have our faith-based organization engage, involved, to pass the word to the parish members, whether throughout our churches or our mosques in the community. It's very important. We reach out to the schools to tell them about the danger, to bring attention to our family members, especially those who do not read right English, the parents who are vulnerable, the kids are not aware of the danger of the drug, the market that is pushing young people to use it, and later on have complications, and they suffer, and the families suffer.
Yes, are you working on funds maybe to do more research about the opioid epidemic?
This is just the beginning of awareness, education, to bring to the community, and definitely we are looking for treatment, and we are looking to expand our base, to work with funding organizations, to bring it to the grassroots level.
So, I'm Mark Greenwald. I'm the Associate Chair for Research and a professor in the Department of Psychiatry and Behavioral Neuroscience at Wayne State University School of Medicine. I've been studying opioids in humans for about 25 years, and we want to understand the effects of opiates on the brain and on behavior, to understand also individual differences in how people respond to these drugs, both prescribed and illegal opioids, and to develop better treatments. So my mission is to apply scientific knowledge to help people improve and to develop policies that will help more people.
So is it affecting, is opioid affecting the brain and the body?
Yes, so we've actually done several brain imaging studies that have led to important advances with the medication buprenorphine. This is an alternative to methadone, which more people know about. But buprenorphine has been approved for about 16 years by the Food and Drug Administration to treat opioid use disorder. And I've actually worked with a company recently to bring a new form of that medication to market. It's actually, for many years, has been a pill that you put under your tongue, and it dissolves, and it lasts about a day or can even last longer. New formulations of medications are now coming up that can last longer. There's a surgical implant that lasts six months, but there are also some what we call subcutaneous injections that form a depot in the body, and they last one month at a time. So that means a patient doesn't have to make a decision every day to take their medication and benefit from it. All they have to do is make 12 decisions a year to just get the injection, and they can receive a benefit from that that will help them abstain from drug use.
Why is opioid increasing in Michigan? This epidemic, the crisis, why is it increasing?
So there's several reasons. One, and the trends in Michigan reflect national trends as well, that we have prescription opioid use that got out of hand, and...
Why did it get out of hand?
Well, I think there was a mandate years ago in the hospitals that physicians and nurses should treat pain, but that got to a point where the prescribing was too liberal. And so the availability of opioids on the market led to a proportional increase in the amount of people who are using them and misusing them, and having problems from that, including overdose and death. So that's one problem that's developed over the years, and that started in the mid-'90s. Meanwhile, we had a problem with the heroin supply, and heroin use waxes and wanes, but what we have now is that fentanyl and other drugs that are similar to fentanyl have been put into the illegal drug supply, oftentimes outside the country and brought in, and many users and their dealers don't even know that the heroin supply typically has become adulterated or mixed and contaminated with these other drugs, which are more potent than heroin itself.
So do you think should be more regulations in regard to that in order for something like that not to happen?
Well, so it's been hard over the years to regulate heroin because it's an illegal drug, and so when the supply from fentanyl entering the heroin supply, which can't be easily detected before somebody uses it, it's very hard to regulate that. The Drug Enforcement Administration is doing their best.
Hi, I'm Louie Haddad. I'm one of the physicians at Wayne State School of Medicine. We are very happy here partnering with ACC to discuss a very important topic and very dear to us, and it falls through, and with our mission as a school of meds, an urban school of meds, and also with the goals of our department, where we try to have research headed by scientists like Dr. Greenwald, who is my partner here, and somebody from the clinical department, work together to serve the most people who are in need of services, who are disadvantaged by their location, by their socioeconomic status, pregnant women who are vulnerable for these opiates, and apply science and clinical care at the same time.
Are you working on an alternative, non-addictive medicine instead of, you know, giving opioid?
Well, this is what Dr. Greenwald has discussed, that most of these drugs are not non-addictive. What's addiction is, and correct me, boss, if I'm wrong...
If it's misused, right?
No, if you get high off of it, if it alters how you feel about real-life matters.
So if you have problems from using, that will get you a diagnosis of an opioid use disorder. So that's what clinicians like Dr. Haddad have to contend with. So it's not just using, it's having problems from using that really constitutes addiction.
Ignoring your family, ignoring your...
We have to look for signs, obviously.
These are the signs, where you start to see a father who doesn't care about anything and not even providing for the family, and rather spend all his money on the drug. The mother ignoring her children.
Having problems at school, having problems on the job, and all that.
But what I'm trying to ensure here is that we, as a university, have put all our effort and all our mission to help the urban setting population.
Well, ACC wanted to shed some light regarding the opioid epidemic in our community because we're really seeing, and our hearts are broken, and that's why the reason, we see a lot of young people who are dying from overdose. So we wanted to create some kind of a sense of dialogue in the community and break the stigma, the shame-based culture, so we can try to educate about the facts, so we can reach the community with the facts, so we can help the parents to be empowered, and we can reach our kids before drugs reach them.
So how far have you gone with this? Since this crisis has been killing thousands of people every year, and it's heading home.
This is the first step. It's a process, and hopefully we will not stop here. This is basically a stepping stone into the community and trying to really reach the community with the message, and trying to help eradicate the stigma of, people don't want to talk about it, and we want to reach them with the message, and we want to encourage people to talk to their kids about the facts of addiction, and how we can overcome it. And there is no need for us to be, so to speak, like giving up on it, because it's an epidemic. But we, by talking, by education, and we can do prevention, and then we can reach the people who are already going through the behavior of addiction, and maybe we can reach them and get them some help.
So what's next?
Right now, next, we're going to be as a bridge in the community, where we can hold the hand of the parents, and we can say, "We are available for you guys. You can come to us, you can call us, and we can provide help for you until you get your son or daughter into treatment," so we can work with you and support you, so they can really start on the road to recovery.
We have succeeded at every area in our life, in immigration, in education, but this area of this initiative to address the crisis in our community, it is the most important. It has to force family to open up, to acknowledge that we are not immune to the opioid crisis. Our children, our spouses, they're all have to pay attention to it. This is a life of matter of life or death. Either we continue to live, or we will lose the second generation.
Hello, everyone. My two louds. Thank you all for being here tonight. I know you had to brave terrible traffic to get here from the various work or other obligations that you had, but we do appreciate you being here, and certainly by virtue of you being here, you obviously realize how important this issue is to so many people. No community is immune, and we know that you understand that as well. We have a lot to get to tonight, so our panelists are making their way toward the stage. I just want to welcome you to ACC's Town Hall Meeting. We're calling this tonight a Community Crisis, ACC's Opioid and Heroin Town Hall Meeting. We've been doing a lot of these throughout the community, and so it's really my pleasure to be here with you tonight. My name is Amy Lang. I'm a reporter and anchor with Fox 2 Detroit. As I said, I've been working with the DEA and the FBI, and the U.S. Attorney's Office and local and state organizations. We've been putting on these panels, and we've had amazing speakers, and we've really had amazing guests. You all have asked incredible questions, and I think that everyone has left these with a little more information, and hopefully a little bit of hope, because I think we can tackle this, but it does take all of us to do so. So as a reporter, I've certainly seen firsthand the devastating effects of this, hearing stories, sitting down with parents who've lost children. It's truly devastating, and what many may not know is that the impact that this epidemic is having also includes the immigrant community in a way that it doesn't impact other communities. And so that's what we're going to kind of talk about here this evening. The stresses of moving to a new country make immigrations or immigrants especially vulnerable to this addiction. Getting help can sometimes be difficult. Certainly there are language barriers when people go to seek treatment, and the ACC, you know, can help. The ACC has been serving so many in the community here in southeast Michigan for nearly 40 years. So with their bilingual, trilingual staff, 39 outreach offices in Wayne, Oakland, and McComb, the ACC serves nearly 70,000 clients on a yearly basis. So thank you, ACC. Let's give you a round of applause. What they want to stress more than anything tonight is that help is available. There is help, and that's the message we want to convey, and that's the message we want you to leave here with tonight, and to take out into your own communities and share and spread the word. We have a distinguished panel of speakers, and we are going to get them to share their insights in just a little bit into this epidemic, including the warning signs, and where to go for help. Again, that's our big thing. So what we would like to do is start with our evening's event chair. You all know him well. He has a long distinguished career in law enforcement. Please join me in welcoming Dearborn Police Chief Ronald Haddad.
Thank you, Amy. Let's give her a hand. She never says no to us. She's a strong advocate for everything that's right in our community, so we appreciate your being here. I am a member of the ACC Board, and let me tell you that I've done this for quite a while. And what really got me to say yes to ACC is because when I walked in there, I realized that they served the entire community, not only those that spoke, Arabic, Spanish, people of all colors. And I was a commanding officer of the 11th Precinct at the time, which was a melting pot of the whole world, and so I was really attracted to them in early 1994, and I've been in some capacity or another serving at ACC. So Haifa just tapped me for this chairmanship of this committee here, but they could have done this without me. And having said that, let me just say that I want to welcome each and every one of you, people on the panel here, people in the audience, and this opioid problem, without question, is one of the most challenging things to our entire country. I've been a cop 45 years, and as a young naive police officer, I thought we could arrest our way out of the heroin epidemic of the '70s. I worked John R. Erskine, you can look it up, it's in the history books. I made 3,000 arrests on one street corner, and I can tell you that it didn't change a darn thing. So we can't arrest out of it. So this holistic approach with schools, faith-based organizations, mental health professionals, the entire community will be needed for us to be able to stand up and do what we need to do. And no one should think that they're immune from it. I can tell you that in the city of Dearborn, our arrest for drugs and prescription drugs has gone up about 300% increase over the last five years. I can tell you that, I'm not supposed to tell you this, but I'll tell you, in Beaumont, the number one killer today is drug overdose. Three years ago, it was cardiac arrest. And so you put some context to that statistic, they don't all come from Dearborn, but they come from the region to that hospital, so they're not all Dearborn residents. So it's in our neighborhood. So it's going to take the entire community as a whole to come up with a solution, and I'm very confident that the group here, this is not the beginning, it's not the end, it's just one more step in our fight to try to save our young people and try to put an end to this scourge. I found it somewhat ironic that pharmaceuticals made the Narcan over the counter, so they just keep making more money on the same problem. But Narcan, as we all know, is a lifesaver, and as I tell people, sometimes it just postpones death for a little while if you don't change what got you there in the first place. So you've got a very informative panel here, and this is just a continuation of our long battle to try to help people and help our community, and I'm very confident that we'll be better off with everyone's help. So again, thank you for being here, and we're ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate Chief Haddad, all that you do in the community, for our community. We're certainly safer as a result of your dedication, longtime dedication, and thank you for serving here for so many years, since 1994. That's serious dedication, so I'm sure the ACC thanks you very, very much. Please join me now in welcoming Sheikh Ibrahim Qasruni from the Islamic Center of America.
In the name of God, the compassionate, the merciful, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, brothers and sisters, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. May peace and blessing of God be upon all of you. To begin with, I would like to thank the organizers for their invitation, especially I'm grateful to Chief Haddad for letting me know that this venue and the program is going to be organized tonight. As he said before me, it is a challenge, not just for one part of the community, for the entire community. Three years ago, when I was asked to join the Islamic Center of America, I never anticipated that I would have to deal with such a magnitude and the crisis that we have. The perceived wisdom was that our kids, adolescents, and teenagers are somehow isolated and insulated from the crisis within the community far front. As soon as I began work, my office was inundated with calls of parents coming in, asking for guidance in how to deal with their kids, and particularly the adolescents, where they had no clue what happened to their child. Suddenly, within a few weeks, everything changed. The more I researched, and the more I talked to people, the more I read, the gloomier the picture became. We just came out a couple of weeks, a couple of months ago, as a matter of fact, Chief was there on the panel at the Islamic Center. 17th of March, we organized a program, a whole-day program regarding the same issue, which I'm delighted to see a follow-up, and I just talked to Chief Haddad, he said he's going to continue with it for later. One thing that stood up as I did my research was the role of spirituality within the program that are being organized in pre and as well as post-treatment. As a preventative step, how can spirituality work to prevent children, adolescents, and youth from falling into the trap? And as a component, as a strategy for post, when they decide to somehow deal with these kids? The statistics is clear in the United States. We have 90% of Americans believe in some kind of a divine power called God. 57% engage in daily prayers. 80% believe that religion and religious faith can aid recovery in all kinds of sickness and challenges that they have. 63% agreed that doctors should talk to them about the role of spirituality in their recovery. This is on one side yet. Most psychiatrists do not believe in God. Nurses and medical students in a survey clearly indicated that spirituality scores very low in the list of treatment that they have. It is interesting for me, at least, as I searched around, to see whether there is some kind of a unique phenomena of our time called post-enlightenment community, only to find out the more I went back, this kind of disconnect existed even many centuries, if not millennia. A book that I came across it as I was searching, Abu Zeid Al Alfi, a ninth and 10th century physician and psychiatrist. In his famous book, Masalih al-Abdan wal-Anfus, The Sustenance of the Bodies and Soul, he criticizes the so-called physicians and the medical practitioners of his time for looking at their patients and trying to find a cure only through a medical practice rather than holistically. He says that they have infatuation with physical illness and symptoms, and restricting their therapy to physical means such as medicine only. He states that they neglected the psychological aspect and the extent of the role of spirit as well as soul and the spirituality. If you come a few, about 10, or 15, or probably 20 years ago, there were a number of books in this field. Al-Bakhti's criticism is echoed, and his sentiment is echoed by a number of writers in this field. Dr. Herbert Benson reiterates same criticism in a bestseller book, Timeless Healing: The Power and Biology of Belief. He says, "Doctors get used to seeing symptoms and signs of illnesses and injury separate from actual patients," and they take this habit back to their practices, medical practices, emphasizing a specific overhaul, body over mind, leaving many patients underwhelmed by their compassion of their interests. There was a book written by Deborah J., It Takes a Family to Deal with the Crisis. I would even venture to say it takes a society to deal with it. It's a challenge now, as I was speaking to Chief before, none of us are immune. There is no such thing as my child is secure, your child is not, is nothing to do with it. Unfortunately, the opioid crisis, drug abuse, et cetera, et cetera, recognizes no boundary, no faith, no religion, no physical location, no geography, nothing else. If we don't stand up together in trying to construct a coherent strategy that every aspect within the society, every partners, every practitioner within the society can contribute in dealing, finding a solution, unfortunately, it will be a myopic approach, and indeed, from one crisis to another. I hope that this will be not the end, the beginning of another step, hopefully moving forward, and I sit down looking forward to listening to the panels as they present their perspective. Thank you very much. Wassalamu'ala.
And thank you to Sheikh Qasruni. This is so interesting because in listening to him speak about, you know, the complexity of this and how it impacts all of society, and we hear from Chief Haddad, and then we hear from the spiritual component, and now we're going to get back to more of the law enforcement perspective. I would like you all to welcome a very special guest that we have with us tonight, and we really appreciate you being here. Kathy Gallagher, the diversion program manager for the Drug Enforcement Administration's Detroit Field Office. They have been so instrumental in these panels and in getting the word out. Kathy, thank you for being here.
It's awfully hard to follow that, very emotional. I get emotional on this issue, and I get all teared up, so you're, I think the theme tonight's going to be compassion, and it's got to be all aspects of this. I'm the law enforcement aspect, but I think what I'm hopeful I can convey is that we truly care about this issue, we want to work with communities, and it's not about just making arrests, it's really about the holistic, how do we help everybody? What I'm going to briefly talk about is the Diversion Control Program, because it's a part of DEA that maybe you're not aware of, and so it's called the Office of Diversion Control, and it kind of has two missions, which is kind of interesting, I think. I've been with DEA 34 years, ending my career, and I really, I feel like I'm racing to save lives, and I can't run fast enough, and now I'm getting old, I can't run at all, so we need everybody to be a part of this. So our mission is twofold, as I said. One is obvious, we need to prevent, detect the diversion of controlled substances. That's kind of the obvious part, but we also have to make sure that there's an adequate supply in this country to meet our legitimate medical needs, because we do have legitimate medical needs. So DEA is tasked with doing this balance. We are in charge of setting quotas for what can be manufactured in this country for narcotics, and we have to look at what's the legitimate medical need in the country. So if we increase the quota, will it increase diversion? If we decrease the quota, will there not be enough for our legitimate patients and scientific needs? So it's a huge burden. I don't think people realize it's not a simple thing. If this was a simple issue, we all wouldn't be here, right? So what is a controlled substance? So Schedule I, you might find interesting federally, Schedule I substances is a substance that has a high potential for abuse and no legitimate medical use. And if you can see the slide, heroin is there, but marijuana as well, and we're not going to go into marijuana tonight, but federally, it's considered a Schedule I substance. So there's, right now, we do research, we have researchers who are doing studies on marijuana that might prove to be that there's a medical need, but right now there isn't. But where the Schedule II drugs are, the drugs that are plaguing, well, both are, heroin is a huge problem too, but Schedule II substances are those substances that have a high potential for abuse but have legitimate use. So that would be Percocet, hydrocodone, oxycodone, drugs that you've probably heard about. Schedule III substances, a lesser abuse potential, but still, it has a legitimate medical use. Those would be Schedule III, like a Tylenol with codeine. I'm only doing this so you understand the background of what I'm going to talk about. Schedule IV drugs would be your benzodiazepines, which are like Xanax, Valium, which is a huge problem in our, in the population too. We talk about opioids, but there are other substances that are abused in combination, something that we need to be mindful of. And our Schedule V's are like our codines with, cost�s with codeine. So that's, the Controlled Substance Act sets certain drugs that need to be scheduled, and with that comes regulatory oversight. So I'm a diversion investigator. If you're going to legitimately handle the drugs, you have to be registered with DEA. So we have oversight of practitioners, physicians, nurses, distributors, manufacturers, and we need to make sure that they all comply with the regulations. Now go to the next slide. So the most commonly prescribed controlled substance medicine in this country is hydrocodone. So the most commonly prescribed controlled substance, medicine in this country, is hydrocodone. So remember, that was a Schedule II drug, high potential for abuse. It's the most prescribed, it's the most abused. And it's a drug that Michigan, Michiganders, I'm new to Michigan, I've been here a year, and I have fallen in love with this part of the country and the people. I'm from the East Coast, we're a little guarded, I'm a friendly person, but you all are so friendly here, it's just the nicest place to be, I have to tell you that. But I'm going to go to the next slide, and this is going to prove that Michigan, we like hydrocodone, and it's prescribed a lot. So what this slide shows you is all the pharmacies in Michigan, what they ordered in a six-month time last year, from January to June, and it ranks them. And if you see, California's number one, the population of California is about forty million, Texas is about thirty million, and Michigan, we have nine point nine million. So we have a nice population, but we're not big. We are number three on this list. So that means doctors are writing a lot of prescriptions for hydrocodone, pharmacies are dispensing. That is an area that DEA is very concerned about, and me, I'm over this program, and my goal was to get that number down. It's not a top ten list we want to be on. We like our top ten sports here, I know that, but this is not a list we want to be on, and that's where we've got to talk to practitioners, and teach practitioners, and how to work with their patients. What we're finding is doctors are saying, "Well, I just won't prescribe them." That is not the message that DEA says. The DEA, if there's legitimate medical need, doctors need to prescribe, but have a conversation with the patients, so that they understand what they're taking, and maybe we can get those numbers down. I'm not saying don't prescribe, I'm saying be more cautious. So what can we do together? Because as you're going to hear all night long, we can't arrest our way out of this, we know that. That's not the goal. My goal as a regulator is to make sure people comply with the regulations, because then there's less diversion. That's my world. But there are things that we can do as a community. The beautiful thing, I'm a positive person, I try to be positive, and this opiate crisis weighs heavy on me. But it's a man-made disaster. You know, earthquakes, we can't predict, volcano, I went to high school in Hawaii, I have people, friends who live in Hawaii, you can't, you can't stop Mother Nature, but it's a man-made disaster, which means it's a man-made solution. We can turn this around, and it's slowly turning around, and it's because of these kinds of events, and the whole collective community being involved. So what can we do? Educate is the key. Of course, I can't read all the way over there, and I can't read my slide here. So what we're asking doctors is educate your patients in the treatment areas, educate people on the dangers of these medications and the abuse potential. Educate, educate, educate. And then secure. So if you do have legitimate medical needs, and these substances are in your home, you need to secure them. Not in the kitchen drawer, not in the medicine cabinet, it needs to be where people can't find them. Because youths, when they are interviewed, where do they find it? They'd get it, family and friends, in the home. If you're selling houses, and you're a real estate person, people will come in and go right back to the medicine cabinet. You've got to secure your medications, please. That's something very, very simple. The other thing is, if you don't need them, and we tend to say, "Ooh, maybe I'm going to need them," don't think that way. We need to change how we think. If you are done with it, you don't need it, you need to dispose of it. The next slide is going to show you, we have now pharmacies throughout Michigan that are signed up to be collectors. We have Southfield PD, they're here today, if you've brought your substances and you want to get rid of them, they're going to take them. But if you go on our website, you can find collections, places that can receive your medications, get them out of your houses. That's, again, simple, secure them in your house, if they're there, and dispose of them. Because what's happening, you'll see the next slide, we have an opiate crisis, but as we, as doctors learn how to better prescribe and work with patients, and maybe tapering people off, or not giving them their medications, they're moving to heroin, or they can't, they're buying it on the street, they can't afford it anymore, and they're going to heroin. And the biggest scare right now is that every single drug seizure of heroin right now has been laced with fentanyl, which is a synthetic, synthetic product coming out of China and Mexico. We could talk about that all night. That's a deadly, deadly substance. So if we can stop the addiction, don't let it start, we won't get to this heroin/fentanyl. There's a whole generation of people we've lost, but I believe that we can prevent the next generation, and again, it's with this group. So let me go back, next slide, please. So here's the thing, that stigma of dependency and addiction is something we've got to break down, and DEA is committed to helping doing that. We're going to talk to doctors on how they should talk to their patients. It's just a simple conversation, setting boundaries. But in all communities, the stigma of addiction is what keeps it, like you were saying, not my family, it's their family. Every family's been touched by this, my own family's been touched by this, it's, we can't, we all know somebody. So we are a community, that we have to come together and work together. Seek help, help is there. Form treatment plans, we've got to get a part of education. Treating it is a chronic disease, this is a disease. This is like diabetes, it's a disease, and that's changing how we look at this, and accepting of people who have become addicted. And be more proactive towards medicated assistive treatment. Again, the stigma of treatment is what I think keeps a lot of people from going that way. The other thing is, this is a long-term chronic disease, this isn't just get clean. This is something that takes people relapse, relapse, it might take five, ten times before they're, they're in a good place, and still, that in this long-term treatment for the rest of their lives. So again, it's a community, you've got to be there for the long haul. We've got, my next slide, I just have two more slides, because we have great speakers coming up. If you have some information, maybe, you know, so we investigate, doctors, we investigate pharmacies, we are law enforcement. So if you have some information that you want to share with us, there's some, there is some, brain to mouth, there are contacts there for the local police, as well as DEA, but also there's some recovery information on that slide, and that will be available to everybody. And then the next slide is more resources. So I'm not sure if this is going to be able to be given to everybody, but that's our, we have a lot of education programs on our website that you can go on to, that tells you how to talk to your kids, and how to help people. Let's see here. And then there's for parents and educators. So there's a lot of resources on DEA's website, so I encourage everybody to go on it, and we've got some handouts in the back. So if you have any questions, we'll be here, and again, thank you so much for inviting us, and know that we're a part of the solution here. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. We so appreciate you being here, sharing your expertise and guidance, and those slides are really informative. Michigan being third for hydrocodone, when we don't have that many people, I mean, that is, that is disturbing, that's clearly an issue, and something that we have to grapple with. And then, of course, the other aspect to this is not just the spirituality, not just the law enforcement, but the people who are being impacted, the people who sadly end up going down that road. You know, there is hope, you can get out of it, and our next guest is going to talk about his own experience in fighting back and winning. And so please welcome me, or join me, rather, in welcoming Rabiya Darwish from the Safe Coalition.
My name's Rabiya Darwish, and I'm an addict and recovery. Thank you, thank you panel for having the courage and willingness to come up here. Thank you, everybody, also for coming out here tonight. You know, they say there's two events that the most important things, two most important things in your life is the day you're born, and the day you find your purpose. And having an event like this gives me purpose in this world and the will to live, so thank you for that. I just want to share a little bit of experience, strength, and hope, and then hopefully my story can help somebody out there, you know, that's still sick and suffering, in and out of active addiction. So, you know, I was born in nineteen eighty-three, in Beirut, Lebanon, in the civil war, and we immigrated here in nineteen eighty-nine to Dearborn, Michigan. You know, I grew up in a very large home, three, four sisters and three brothers, and we had a really good family. My father is ninety-two years old, my mother is in her seventies, and we really had a very good household, we were really galvanized growing up. And, you know, I went to middle school, it was Lori Middle School, and I can recall behind the gas station, the first time I saw anyone smoking marijuana, and I think I was twelve years old. I didn't really like the smell, but I was really curious, you know? And I didn't, I didn't really smoke any marijuana until I became a freshman in high school when I was fourteen years old. And when I, when I smoked marijuana, it made me feel comfortable in my skin for the very first time in my life. And it felt like there was something missing, and it filled that void for me, it made me feel different. And, you know, at that time, of course, I didn't know that I had an allergy, you know, or a disease. And then, you know, I, the lifestyle of partying was more attractive than being a good person. So I started putting myself around people that did not make good decisions. And later on, but I was still, you know, involved in sports, I was still, you know, I still went to college, then I had an injury, and I was prescribed hydrocodone, hydrocodeine, Vicodin. And I was put on it for about a year and a half. And after that, I didn't understand why I was getting sick when I was taken off of it. Then I was prescribed Suboxone for another two years. And the withdrawal from that was terrible, it was about almost fifty days of withdrawal. And let me describe to you what a withdrawal is. A severe headache, watery eyes, you know, water coming down my nose, I was coughing consistently, dry mouth, cold hands, my feet hurt, my knees hurt, my hips hurt, consistently, diarrhea, going to the bathroom, my spine felt like it was breaking. That's just from Suboxone. And of course, you know, I don't want to feel this way, so I'm going to do whatever it takes to not feel this way, and if it means stealing, I'm going to do that. And ultimately, I started stealing from my mother, my father, my brothers, my sisters, my neighbors, anyone, anybody. I started robbing everyone. And then shortly after that, I went back, which I thought I was maintaining a lifestyle, I'm working, but of course, I dropped out of college, started hanging out with, you know, worse people, I guess you can say, or just, you know, people that don't understand, I guess you can say. And, you know, against the law, and I, you know, started adding Somas to the Vicodin, went back to the Vicodin, started adding Xanax to the Vicodin. And mind you, that it's an expensive habit, so each dose would cost around sixty to a hundred dollars, and I would take this dose about four to five times a day. So it doesn't matter how much money you make, it's really expensive, right? And in order to maintain my habit, I had to do whatever it took, and it took me to really dark places. I started selling drugs, so I became a part of the problem. You know, police officers took notice of me, and, you know, I was on the wrong side of the law. I attempted to go to treatment, but, you know, I don't think I was ready at that time, I didn't really understand. And, and at the time, and, you know, there were a lot of people that said, you know, you need help, but I really kept it under the wraps, and so did my family. My brother always said, you know, like, "Let's kick him out, he needs to go," and my mother, you know, has an unconditional love for me, okay? Which I truly appreciate, but in this case, she was an enabler, she loved me to death, literally. Because of her love, I was going to die, inevitably. Because she was protecting me, she thought she was, and it's not her fault, it's not like we're educated in this, right? But that's why we're having this discussion right now. And then I went to treatment, and when I got out, the only thing I know, society tells me, is to get a job, get a college education, ultimately get married, of course, our culture says that, and live life, right? Well, because of being in active addiction for that amount of time, I lost those kind of social interactions. I, you know, my mind became so corrupted that I no longer understood on how to maintain a bank account, how to have a vehicle, how to have relationships with people, relationships with women, even relationship with God. That all got thrown out the window. And mind you, when, when there's a lot of pressure, and you're in recovery, and you're trying to deal with stress, and if there's no, if you're not a part of something greater than yourself, or you have no support system, the only thing you know is the habit that you formed, and the disease calls you, and it tells you to go use, because that's the only way you're going to deal with the stress. And the disease always, you know, tells you through celebration, through anything, you know? The excuse is always, "I'm going to use no matter what, I'm going to use no matter what it is." And then that's how I ultimately relapsed. Then ultimately, I graduated to heroin, I started using heroin, I started sniffing it in the beginning, then I started shooting it. You know, thank God I don't have hepatitis C, but it took me to the point where I was in an abandoned house one time, and I put the syringe in the toilet to take some water, and, you know, to mix it and shoot it. So I guess I got lucky there. Ultimately, I ended up going to treatment twenty-three times. I ended up using crack, cocaine, methadone for a brief period, you know, about fourteen other substances. And of course, I thought that I can maintain by using marijuana, and at one point, I knew that there was a problem, when my own family started telling me, "Man, what, can you just smoke marijuana and be like everyone else?" I guess. And I looked at him, I said, "Oh, this is a problem." Like, I never imagined my family telling me, you know, to smoke marijuana. And, yeah, there was no way, that was like my go-to thing, to smoke marijuana, and it just never worked. Marijuana will never work for me for the rest of my life. No mind or mood-altering substance will ever work for me for the rest of my life, and I'm okay with it today. I'm grateful for that. And, you know, May third, I'm going to skip forward, because I don't have that much time, May third, two thousand sixteen, you know, I went into a treatment center, that was my twenty-third time. And, you know, my liver was breaking down, kidneys breaking down, I really couldn't get high anymore, and no matter what I took, I couldn't get high. My brain hurt, I was so tired, I was just sick and tired, and it hurt so bad. By that time, of course, I had destroyed every relationship with everyone I knew, I even destroyed relationship with the drug dealers, they no longer liked me either, so it's like, and of course, destroyed, you know, Dearborn Police back there, they would wait for me in front of my house. And, you know, I'm grateful, I want to thank Dearborn Police, because, you know, they gave me a DUI, and it saved my life, and they actually pulled me over in front of my house, because I could have killed somebody that night. So please give them a round of applause, please. But also, I want to share that, you know, I did go to jail at one point, and I can recall, they wanted to speak to me, and they said, "We would release you on tether." And I said, "Am I going to be on house arrest?" And they said, "No, you can leave for twelve hours." I said, "Please, no, I want to stay in jail." And they said, "What do you mean?" I said, "No, I want to stay here." See, I was afraid of the air, everything was a trigger to me. I was afraid of myself, I was so afraid, and I didn't know what to do. So I was pretty much hopeless and spiritually bankrupt. And when I went into treatment, when I went into treatment, I said, you know, I surrendered, "Just tell me what to do, please help me." You know? I didn't know what to believe in, I just said, "Just please help me," you know, and they just said, "Take it one day at a time, just one day at a time, that's all, just win the day," you know? So I went through detox, I got out of treatment, and I went back home. And mind you, when I saw this room that I went into, they had changed the bed, but there was still carpet on the floor, and there were cigarette burns, and I can recall sitting in that room, okay? And there were cigarette burns on my skin, on my pants, on my shirt, on the floor, on my bed, and I'm staring at this television, okay? And there are two people having conversation, and I could not understand the concept of dialogue anymore, and my mother would stand there crying. And my mother would stand there crying, "How can we help you? You know, what can we do for you? How can I help you?" And I couldn't even respond to my own mother, you know? Uh, and I really wanted to take my life, and I, I tried to, uh, you know, I attempted suicide about four times. And obviously, I'm still here. And I looked at myself as a coward because I couldn't kill myself, you know? I could OD, but I just would not, you know? I didn't want to be a part of this world. So ultimately, when I looked at that room, and I said, "If I stay here, I'm gonna die." I know that for a fact. I'm going to die. And I, I had to, I made a tough decision, and my mother was crying. I said, "I need to go to three-quarter housing. That's structured living." Um, and I was afraid, but I, I had to take a leap of faith. And I went to a three-quarter house, and mind you, the first night in a three-quarter house, it was, it was set up for disaster. There were, there were bedbugs upstairs. It was 95 degrees, okay, humid. The power went out in West Land, and I'm sleeping on a couch next to stinky feet. And I'm saying to myself, "Man, I can just go home right now, you know, to nice air conditioning." And my mom was calling me to, of course, saying, "Come back, come back, come back. Ya Allah, come back." And, uh, you know, that's, that's my mother, you know, just trying to protect me. Um, and then I said, "This is a lot better than active addiction. This is 10,000 times better than active addiction, you know, being dope sick, waking up sick, and chasing." And so I ended up making the decision to stay. Um, my first year in recovery was not easy. There were a lot of, lot of trials. Uh, you know, I, um, you know, I just, uh, May 3rd, I just got two years clean. And, uh, you know, for seven years, I didn't have my license. I didn't have a vehicle for about 12 years. Um, and I really didn't have that much, that many friends, you know, outside of, uh, of people using. That's all I knew. And, uh, you know, I'm, I'm so grateful that I have, I draw breath with you today. I'm so grateful, um, because it's been really tough. And, uh, and today's a gift. Today's a beautiful gift, because every day's been a gift. There's been struggles, but, you know, we've overcame a lot. And I say "we" because I didn't do it alone. I didn't do it alone today. I'm grateful that I believe in a higher power. You know, I believe in God today. I was given the opportunity to go to Hajj, um, and I was, I was blessed to be put in front of people that gave me the opportunity to help others. Imagine that, just to help somebody else. And, uh, I'm so grateful. And it just, it was really simple. It all came just by being honest, you know? Just have, you know, they told me to be open-minded and willing, and just be honest. And, and that's been a part of my survival, is just by being honest. And, and, and so every day I wake up, I thank God for giving me another day. I, I, I ask Him just to, for me to stay clean and sober in this day, because that's the only thing, um, that is reality, is the 24 hours that I'm giving, I'm given. And I realize that no man is promised tomorrow, you know? So I live for today, literally. And I, and I ask God to give me the guidance and the wisdom to understand that the only thing I can control is my actions and my thoughts. And that, and that I can't, I can't control what you do. And just to react, you know, like, just to have the right words to help somebody else, because I do make mistakes. I am guilty of a lot of things. And I'm grateful that, uh, you know, I work on not lying, because I had such a long career of lying, because that's all I knew, you know? In early recovery, that's pretty much all I knew, is how to lie and make up a story, because I wanted to be accepted. I really want, just wanted, you know, I wanted somebody to like me, and then I realized for a long time, I didn't like me. Okay? And I, and of course, it, it's a process. Recovery is a process. Uh, today, I have my whole entire family in my life. My whole family, my, my, my brother, he wanted to kick me out, said he was proud of me. Yeah, my brother told me, you know, he's proud of me. I've never heard him say that in like 20 years. Uh, you know, I have great friends. Uh, today, uh, you know, I have roommates that are in recovery. And please give them a round of applause. My, my friend Rocky and Hassan. And, and we, we follow a 12-step program. It's a spiritual program. Uh, and we're really grateful for that. Um, and I'm truly grateful to just work for Hype, I'm the building manager in Wayne. And of course, we'll explain on the panel later on of what we do. Um, but I just wanted to say again, um, you know, thank you so much, and thank you for your courage. And so God bless you, and thank you for letting me serve.
Ravi, thank you for your courage, for sharing that story. Certainly gives people hope, you know? You can get out, you can move beyond it. It's not easy, but it's possible. So congratulations on your two years sober, and we wish you many, many more. I think he's on the right path, right? So, yeah, that's great. Um, so I, we do wanna get to some questions from, from all of you. I'm not sure if you've written them down on index cards, or if we're just gonna go to the audience. But first, um, I do want to let the panel introduce themselves. Um, so each panelist, if you can just tell us who you are, give us some insights, and then we'll move on to questions from the audience. So I'm going to start with the microphone right here.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Mark Greenwald. I'm a professor in the Department of Psychiatry and Behavioral Neuroscience and Associate Chair for Research at Wayne State University School of Medicine. Uh, I've been studying the effects of opioids and opioid medications and behavioral and individual difference factors in people for 25 years. Um, I'm, uh, I have a passion as a scientist for this problem that is presently killing 115 people a day in the United States. Um, so two-thirds of all of the drug overdose deaths last year were opioid-related. And I teach medical students and graduate students about this. And, uh, it's, it's a very sobering problem, pun intended. Um, and it's very inspiring to hear or tell this story. Um, I have, uh, done many, um, I've, I've been involved a lot in the development of buprenorphine-related products, including a recent medication that the Food and Drug Administration approved. And, um, I also happen to be one of the few researchers in the country that has studied the effects of fentanyl in humans. And, um, be happy to answer questions about that. I won't go, go into detail now. But, um, there is, there is no one pathway to recovery. We heard an incredibly compelling story just now. Um, there, there are many pathways, and spirituality and other factors are key components of recovery. But, um, we, we need to have a team approach this, as Kathy, you know, told us. We all need to be in this together. And I think there are multiple factors that determine whether somebody's going to enter the treatment. We have a huge treatment gap right now in the United States. Only maybe, give or take, 20% of people with a substance use disorder, including opioids, is actually in treatment. So we need to help motivate people and be sensitive to cultural values and individual differences to help nudge people along the pathway towards that first treatment episode. Because if you go to treatment once, as we've learned, you might go again, and it may take many more times. So I'll stop there for now and let my colleagues jump in.
I think you should keep talking. I am Father George Shalhoub, founder and pastor of St. Mary's Basilica in La Vona. I am grateful for this event. This is all clergy, imam, pastor need to hear that. I've been involved in marriage and family counseling for the last 35 years. And, um, part of this 30 years was also trying to help out of children who were addicted to crack. And I remember one time, I tried to counsel the crack addict. And I didn't realize that this is not my expertise. And after he left, he came, and he was so high, and he was gonna kill me in my office. And I knew him, and I, I really love him. And my secretary called the police, and it took four police to bring him down. And this is the only time, after he's been through 30 rehab, finally he quit, because he all attempted to shoot me. I make it my business not to shy, to talk in the church, that we're not perfect. You know, Ulat al-Arab, they tend to think they're the best in the world, and they have no problem because they cook hummus and tabbouleh, and they can dance the dabbke. And we find out these are secondary. So I make it my business, and I would appreciate if Haifa will make these two pamphlet that I can mail them to every home. I need 1,200. And because these are the most important tools for priests, for imam, because we do not know everything. Yes, I agree with, uh, with Imam Ibrahim, that no soul exists without a body, and no body exists without ruh, without soul. So we are to deal with the, uh, the soul and body. And I am, at this age, still trying to learn. And I will be more than happy to open my facility to have a, a night of recovery in my community. I did that some 20 years ago for Narcotic Anonymous. And I learned when Rabia said, "My name Rabia, and I am an addict." And I said, "Good evening, Rabia." And I learned to acknowledge and appreciate a recovered addict. Thank you so much for hosting this incredible event.
I am Father Manuel Bogi from the Caldian Church. Uh, the church that I serve in now, it is in the St. Link Heights. About eight years before I was in Southfield, the main church. Mother of God Church or Cathedral. Uh, for me, dealing with the symptoms, which is, it's good, but doesn't give a real solution. So we have to deal with the reasons. And the reasons of any epidemic at the end, I believe, starts with the family, even before the school. I am not very encouraged by this school system, where, under the name of total freedom, everything, it could be at the end allowed. Uh, please don't understand me that I am somehow not encouraging that, but we have to go back to the village's mentality, even in our school system. The village mentality is that every man and woman in the village is responsible of raising the children of the village. And although we are in 300, over 300,000, 300 million people in the United States, if we can't give that village's mentality to our community, to our society, it will be very helpful. The very first word maybe the kids learn in our homes and our families is, "I don't care." That's not a good word, that our children are learning it. "I have to care." And when God asked Cain about his brother Abel, he said, "Am I a keeper of my brother?" We are all keepers of our brothers and sisters. So thank you very much for having here, having me here. And I hope at the end, if the whole society, starting from the, from the family, can do this job, going through school, organizations like these, and churches, mosques, any religious institution, but starting from the family is very important. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you to the organizers for having this wonderful gathering. Uh, my name is Ed Junie. I'm a, um, addiction psychiatrist at U of M in Ann Arbor. Uh, I'm also the Associate Medical Director of the University of Michigan's Addiction Treatment Services. Um, I'm also the Program Director of our, um, Addiction Psychiatry Fellowship Training Program. I've been treating substance use disorders for about the last eight years. Um, it's a wonderful area to work in. It's very gratifying. Uh, we're able to help a lot of people. Uh, one thing that I'd like to say is that in my time in the clinic, I've treated CEOs of major corporations, I've treated lawyers, I've treated physicians, and I've treated homeless people. The thing I wanna emphasize is, this is not a disease of moral failing. This is not a disease of disenfranchised. This is not a disease of the homeless. This illness affects everybody. I've seen people from every socioeconomic status. I've seen people that came from wonderful families. I've seen people that come from horrible families. Um, one of the things that I'd like to emphasize is the prejudice that plagues this disease. Um, it is astounding. Um, one of the stories that I like to tell is that, um, I had somebody who, I, there was somebody out in the local community that, whose brother was struggling with a substance use problem, quite severe substance use problem. Uh, they came from a quite prominent family, and I was encouraging her based on his symptoms that he needed to go into an inpatient program, uh, just because of the severity of his drug use. And when I mentioned to her that he needs to go into an inpatient program, she says, "I don't want him to be around those people." So that unfortunately is some of the prejudice that we're facing. And I think having an event like this, I hope, will de-stigmatize the illness for a lot of people and understand that this is not a process of any faulty moral character, or weakness, or anything like that. This is a medical condition. It affects approximately 15% of the population. Um, we can look and find genetic markers, we can look back and look at physiology. Um, and I'll be happy to answer any questions about treatment as we go through the program. Thank you.
My name is Walid Gemmo. I work as a consultant with ACC. I have been a social worker for the last 35 years, whether mental illness or addiction, parent education, intervention, uh, treatment. And I have talked personally with families, with mothers, with fathers, and who have lost their kids to overdose. So tonight, I know, was, there is a lot of broken hearts out there. And it is really a responsibility that we have for the community to share with them the facts and the truth about this epidemic that we are being faced with on a daily basis. Rahad kallam al-Arabi, I'm gonna speak in Arabic a little bit, because we have a lot of audience here in Arabic that have come in just a little bit late. that have come in just a little bit late. The adman is a dangerous disease. And it's mistaken and mischievous. It's not a disease of origin, but it's a disease of particular features. And it's mistaken and mistaken. And therefore, it leads to inability to control and manage. And ultimately, it leads to death. A rapid assessment of the adman or rapid assessment. The American and Iranian Council wants to ban the law on these issues in our country because of its dangers and because of its impact on families. Approximately 171 people are dying from excessive exposure. If we hit 171, that's the number of people dying. Three thousand 65,000, meaning, it's about 64,240 people. We, as a country, whether we're Arab or Iranian, we're present in America. And this is also why we're among the worst cases. Therefore, we have to try to understand the facts, and not want to hide the facts. As a cultural community, our culture is that we don't want to talk about this issue. Or we don't want to try to, with our children in the family, to open the topic to talk about. Because many times, they say, "The honor is stronger than death itself." Meaning, the honor and greatness is stronger than death. Therefore, it's better not to talk about this issue. The American and Iranian Council wants to ban the law on these issues so that it gives the facts. And of course, we're going to follow the adman and the dangerous situation in the community through the evidence, through the presence of a legal system, and through the work that we're doing. So we, as the American and Iranian Council, are very prepared to provide these messages in the country. And I hope that in this evening, you take all of these information. Because this is not the end. Today is not the end. It's a process, a process. We must do it continuously, whether we're talking, or with our children, or whether we're researching the facts, so that we can face these difficulties and we can accept them.
Thank you again. My name is Rabia Darwish with the SAFE Coalition and Hypathetics as well. At SAFE, we are in Dearborn Public Schools now. We've been in schools for about four months, where we speak about prevention to the youth and mentoring as well. The part that I participate in, so I'm the building manager at Hypathetics in Wayne. And through the SAFE Coalition, we have families that call us. And of course, everything is anonymous. What we do is, we sit down with the family first, get an understanding of their situation, and try to educate the families first. And then, we stage an intervention as well, if they want to go that far. And then, after the intervention, we hope to get the patient into treatment. Then, but while we're doing that, we stay in contact with the family and educate them throughout the process. That way, they don't enable them. Because essentially, you know, the patient just wants to go back home or leave. And they just need anything to justify their actions of leaving. They just need to hear one time, "Yeah, come home," or, you know, or "They'll come to you," or "They'll make a threat." So basically, coaching them through that. And then, after that, once they come out of treatment, we allow them to come back to Hype, where they, of course, we encourage them to have a recovery plan after, whether it's in three-quarter housing and IOP. So we work with other centers, like Safe Step, and that's in Wayne County, of course, and the Lighthouse. And we encourage IOP, that's intensive outpatient treatment. And while they do these courses, they come to Hype, they volunteer, they re-assimilate themselves into society, they speak with members, they help clean, they participate in all our events, whether it's the Turkey Drive or Marshmallow Drop. And people thank them for that, just by volunteering. And that gives them a little sense of purpose. And then, ultimately, we get, we sometimes put them through our vocational training, where we prepare them for jobs, and then ultimately, we even employ them at Hype. And now, in Wayne, we've, you know, thank God, Ali Said gave us the opportunity of creating a, pretty much, a recovery environment. Eighty percent of the employees there are in recovery. And so, we always encourage them to go back to school and find help, even with finances, whatever it is in life that throws at them, we encourage them. Nine times out of 10, it's kind of difficult to work with the families, because, I mean, how do you tell somebody how to raise a child? You know, it's, you know, and that person ultimately is not a child. It's an adult. But that's the environment that was created. And it's a tough road. But of course, it is anonymous, so we will help you. It's, are you willing to go through any lengths? Because we will, you know. And, you know, I wish that treatment centers were court-ordered or, you know, but nine times out of 10, they can voluntarily walk out. But yeah, that's ultimately what we do. We help out. And we try to, you know, reach out as much as we can. And we volunteer, and we'll pretty much, you know, we'll help you guys. And of course, a lot of people I hear, they say that treatment, it costs a lot of money. Yeah, it does. But we also have a state-funded program here in Michigan, due to the Detroit Wayne Mental Health Authority. And it's called Pioneer Insurance. It's 1-800-721-4949. And they'll just take you through a brief, like, demographic and interview process. And then, they'll place you in a treatment center, you know. And what we do is, we take that person step by step. And even if there's a language barrier, we speak Arabic as well. So it doesn't matter. And of course, we have people in SAFE that speak other languages as well. So there's no demographic that we don't touch. But we are young. We are about a year and some change old. So we just hope that you guys give us a chance to help you. Remember, we're here to serve you. So thank you.
You know, when Ronald had that chief of Dearborn, I've been there 10 years. When you look at the crime picture across America, as high as 90% of crime in urban areas is related to drug addiction. So when we say, "We need funds to implement programs," I take exception with that. We need policy that says, "We understand what the root causes of the problems are," and attack it that way. I can tell you, in Dearborn recently, the 19th District Court implemented a veterans' court. And when you think about it, Father Boji mentioned about the 300 million-plus Americans that live in this country. Less than 1% of our population serves in the military. They go off to a strange place to protect our rights, to protect our way of life. And they often come back to find a world that they can't identify with anymore. They're addicted. So with our court, our police department has partnered up to identify veterans that come into police contact that are addicted to drugs. And we find alternative means to hold them accountable, but more importantly, to put them back on a road to recovery. A second thing we're working on in Dearborn is an intervention model, where if we find someone that wants help, we're gonna partner. We have worked with ACC and others to partner up with social agencies so that we can put them in that direction. The third thing we do, we visit our schools. And you mentioned the kids. We visit our schools. We have 50 in Dearborn. 50 schools of all kinds, private, religious, public, 50, five-zero. We visit them 800 times a month with unannounced visits. So in addition to the safety, we want to be good role models for our young people. I can tell you that we can rest our way out of it. But when we catch people that are selling narcotics in our community, we hold them very accountable. And the last thing we're doing in Dearborn is, we've implemented a special needs register. And we're encouraging people who have family members that, anything from mobility problems to mental issues, autism, and including addiction to drugs or alcohol, that they register them with our 911 center. So if we get a police fire or a medical run over there, we should know that, so we can properly deal with it. When we knock at the door and nobody answers, it doesn't always mean that no one is home. It might mean that they're down and they can't answer. So more increasingly, we have our community letting us know where they have members that are addicted, at their homes. And when you get a domestic violence run, for example, and they calm down when the police car pulls out in front of the house in Dearborn, how many people live in Dearborn here? Many? You know, when you call the police, you just don't get one car. You get like five cars that come up there. That tends to calm things down. Then you go in, and the mother, father, brother, sister, wife, spouse will say, "Yeah, they're calm now, it's okay." But if we don't know that these problems exist, the minute we leave, it's not gonna get any better. So we encourage our community to use that special needs register so that we can properly serve them. And again, it will take the entire community on a whole. As the chair of this committee here, is there a couple of chairs open down here? Can I ask Kathy and Imam, come on up here, in case there's some questions that are directed to you in the Q and A session? And with that, I want to say, thank you to everyone, and we're ready for Q and As, right? Thank you.
My name is Walid Aldeev from ACC as well. I want to thank Dr. Fahri in ACC. As we all have agreed, that it affects every community, whether you're rich, poor, live in the city, suburb, rural area. But for those of us in the field also, I see a big problem is, there's not enough adequate from the federal, state, and local level. It's very important to have adequate funding for, to tackle this issue for prevention, education, and treatment. And support group, like Robi mentioned, we need support group. And unfortunately, there's not enough out there. The problem exists, but we need adequate funding. And I hope, I saw some elected officials here, a few, I hope that they can advocate that this is a serious issue, this is an issue that we can prevent with adequate funding. Thank you.
Chief Kathy, anyone kind of going away, I don't have any mark.
No, not much. So the federal government, various arms, have allocated funds through recent legislation to increase funding for treatment, as distributed through Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. Everyone who's a taxpayer in this room can actually be confident, because every dollar that's invested in substance abuse treatment increases the return on investment. I've seen estimates anywhere from $3 to $12 returned in, you know, otherwise lost productivity, medical care costs, and so forth, for every single dollar that's invested in treatment. Somebody said earlier, "We can't arrest ourselves out of this problem. We can't jail people." Jail costs, corrections, people can correct me, but it's about $30,000 a year to put someone in prison, whereas it's about half that on average, depending on the modality of treatment. So treatment is a good investment. I completely agree with you. And if we believe the federal government, to the extent that we can help, or at least more help is on the way.
I can tell you, we have about 37,000 practitioners in Michigan, and about 10,000 nurse practitioners, physician assistants. And there's only 1,000 of those that are registered with us to do drug treatment. And of those 1,000, only about 500 are actively doing it. So that's something that practitioners, that we could encourage them to come and become a drug treatment specialist with a little bit of training. They could at least, if they could see 10 patients. It's a delicate population, but I think that's not increased funding. Doctors aren't actually looking for that type of treatment. I think that's the key too.
Good evening, I recommend everybody. I'm really enjoying it, and thank you very much for organizing. When Rabia spoke about 12 years old, when he saw that guy smoking behind the gas station, and by 14 years old, he tried, then he said something very important. When he tried, he was missing something. And when he tried, he fulfilled that hole or that missing part. Spiritually, as the fathers know and the imams, there is a saying in the Bible and in the Quran, "Ulaik alladhi naxiru amfusahum." There's some time in your life without being careful could lose yourself. So before you lose yourself, you need to protect yourself without being lost. So keep your conscious away. Always check the battery for the alarm system. Because when you lose it, it's hard to regain, it's bad. So we can help the people how to maintain and protect themselves before they lose it.
I'd like to go back to the first question. As we were doing research for a program that we organized at the Sonic Center of America, 17th March, Chief Haddad is aware of it. I was horrified, as I went to 19th District, that there used to be something called the Drug Court, headed by Judge Summers. And somehow, the finance and the financial support was removed from that court, and now no longer exists. Extremely able judge knows his way around the drug world. And even during the panel, when he presented, he was talking to the expert. We really need, not only the doctors, not the administration, we really need to provide the financial support to the judges. And when I talked to all these judges, they said, "We cannot force somebody to go for treatment. What we can do is send them to jail. Once the withdrawal symptoms begin, then bring them back to the court. You say, 'You can either stay there and follow that for another two or three months,' or the option is to go for treatment.'" We really need, in addition to the research which is being done at universities, drug administration, et cetera, et cetera, the courts must be supported, so that the judges that are experts in this field understand which direction these addicts should go for treatment.
Good evening. My name is Samir Haddad. I host the Arabian Kandar Wadi Show. Thanks for the ACC and the panels for this important evening. My question is, as Mr. Darwish said, he tried marijuana, then he went to crack, and so on. So if marijuana kills, then why there are so many, increased in marijuana shops, especially in Detroit area? Secondly, one of the quarters, as was Mr. Gemmo, she said, she said, "Most of Arab," she said exactly that. Some of she knows, some Arab-Americans who own marijuana shops in Detroit area. Thank you.
All right, chief, do you want to kind of tackle the sort of number of shops we're seeing out there?
Well, I don't own any of them. Let me just say this, that the state of Michigan probably leads the world in giving out CPL, concealed weapon permits. And there's one thing that they give out more, and it's a medical marijuana card. So I think 29 states in our country have some form of legalized marijuana. I think that it's an uphill battle. I personally don't support it. Right now, the state law will allow cities to opt in. And if they don't buy a date, then they don't have licensing to open up shops. I don't believe there's any that are gonna go into Dearborn. And a city has a right, based on the state law, to have a marijuana store in their neighborhood if they want it. So I think that the only thing we can do as citizens is elect people that support the views that you believe in. And it's gonna be uphill battle, no matter what. I think out in Colorado, they got warehouses of money that they're paying literally millions of dollars a month to guard. I can't even imagine that much money. So there's a lot of money in marijuana. And I can tell you that the medical marijuana in the state of Michigan put the Mexican cartel out of business because of the grade and the quantity that's... cartel out of business because of the grade and the quantity that's available. And that's a pretty sad event. So I know that's not the answer you wanted to hear, but that's the reality of what we have to deal with.
And with this reality that we have, I just want to add that we can never lose hope because the family unit is so important. And the more the family takes responsibility in the community of learning the facts and teaching the facts, and trying to create a sense of belonging in their homes, that would become a protective factors in the way that it will help our kids when they go out, that they don't really start looking for places to belong. And I think that would create more of a sense of self-esteem, that their decision-making outside of the home will reflect on that sense of belonging.
I know our DEA has a very sophisticated way of tracking the type of medicines and the volumes, and they've stepped it up. It's more complicated than local police just cracking on a doctor. So we are working with our federal partners to do our very best with that. And don't ever underestimate the pharmaceutical industry and their lobbyists. I mean, I think they run neck and neck with the NRA, but they're more quiet about it. So it's bigger than just cracking a doctor in a neighborhood.
I'd just like to add a comment to that. Firstly, something to realize is that simply taking an opioid does not mean you're going to develop a substance use problem. The utilization of opiates are essential to modern day healthcare. They're actually needed for intraoperative procedures, for post-operative pain management, and for other ailments. The utilization of these drugs is actually needed. The development of addiction is a complex thing. It involves multiple factors. It involves somebody's genetics. It involves mental health history, psychosocial factors, environment. It's a constellation of multiple things coming together that determine somebody's underlying vulnerability to develop this illness. But I think it's important to note that the simple prescription, the simple utilization of this medication does not mean you're going to become addicted. I don't know if Dr. Greenall, if you had any other comments about that?
Right, and I want to tip my hat because we have a shortage of addiction psychiatrists and addiction medicine professionals. If you could encourage anyone to take up that profession, he's doing a great job. So I think what we need to understand, and I mentioned this earlier to Hanan when we were talking, is that you don't earn a diagnosis until you have problems associated with your substance use, okay? And as Dr. I just said, you know, not everybody is cut from the same cloth, not everybody is as vulnerable. But I think we need to understand that when physicians are prescribing, the good physicians are doing a risk assessment. They have tools at their disposal to identify individuals who might be more vulnerable and also who might have protective factors. You know, we talk about the development of addiction. We always pathologize. You know, there's a tendency when you're in a clinical profession or a helping profession, you always see the dark side. And that's what we have learned from Rabiha. And but we also need to have a sort of a positive spin on this and hope and think more often than we often do about protective factors.
So I truly appreciate your comments. We do actively do criminal investigations of practitioners who are basically drug dealers. It's a difficult case because we have to prove knowledge and intent that the drugs are going to be used for illicit purposes. The ones, the clinics where the people are lined up around the corner, it's a great red flag, we can find that. But other doctors, it's hard to prove that. And so, but we have a tactical diversion squad where we have police officers as well as special agents, as well as a diversion investigator. We come together, we bring our resources. There are never enough of resources. The majority of doctors are good. I think there's education needs to happen. They don't get the education, and even in medical schools, on how to prescribe and to look for these issues that we've talked about today. So there's a balanced approach. But I assure you, and if you have, if you know somebody you think is one of those, please pass on the information to us so that we can actively investigate. But that's what we do. We do, we do these types of investigations. And we regulate the drug companies as well. And that's, that's a whole other hour conversation we could talk about. But I do appreciate your comments. I do have to catch a plane, and so I'll be leaving soon. It's not because I don't want to be rude, but I'm just watching the clock. So if I leave, that's why. So the state has actually enacted some new policy, new regulations that will inhibit acute care and the quantity that can be prescribed. Sometimes that's the pendulum that swings. Now the legislatures, you get them involved, that could impact medical decisions. But yes, the state, the state law has enacted a lot of new things that I think, I think will help.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Obi. I'm a primary care physician practicing in Dearborn. So please Kathy, don't give before you answer my question.
I do have people here that if I have to run, they're.
Okay. All right. I have two suggestions. One of them, you just answered. I suggest that there should be a limit on the number of pills dispensed at pharmacies and the number of refills. I know that Walmart is going to start, or it already started, and all their pharmacies to limit the number of the pills dispensed. So this is a big help to cut down on this epidemic. The other suggestion is to, I mean, I'm not trying here to blame somebody, but the blame is on all of us, pharmaceuticals, society in general, because of our perception of pain and our tolerance to pain, and also doctors. As a primary care physician, I think the crackdown should start in every ER and every pain clinic. When a patient comes to me after two years of treatments in a pain clinic on 120 Percocet, and his pain doctor dropped him, he doesn't want to give a prescription, I feel stuck. I don't know what to do. Is it really, is he suffering from pain or is he addicted to pain medicine? And most of the times, really, I don't know what to do. So I think it should be, you know, the culture of treating the pain should change on every level, every society, every community, everybody. My question now, on few occasions in the past, I was getting calls from pharmacies of people using my name and my DEA number, and they are not my patients, to dispense Narco, SOA, Xanax, and they're using read prescriptions with my DEA number and my name, but fake signature. I don't know what to do. I, we called the police, they said, not Dearborn police, other city. Really, it was other city. And they said, we cannot help. It happened two, three, four times, and I'm still getting these calls. So I don't know what to do.
So a lot of things there, and in my mind just went, I don't know if I'm going to answer those. Why don't afterwards, I can have my colleagues help you with the, you can get a new DEA number at no cost. If people are going to forge prescriptions, there's not much you can do other than do your reporting. So I appreciate that. The prescription monitoring program is improved in the state of Michigan, and that's helping us look for doctor shoppers, as well as pharmacy hoppers, is the other term that we call. And I think that's, as that, as more doctors enroll in MAPS is what it's called, that is going to help tremendously with this issue. Because a doctor has the tools to see, maybe they look at the patient and think, oh, I'm not going to prescribe, they look like they're abusers, and they're not. And then they're going to look at maybe someone like me and say, well, she doesn't look like she would abuse. And I'm hitting every doctor in town, getting drugs, getting prescriptions. So the prescription monitoring program, MAPS is a huge tool for you. I think if prescriptions aren't written, then pharmacies aren't dispensing. So that's where we really have to work with doctors and educate because you're inheriting problems. So we've got to start, start it somewhere in helping educate. Practitioners need to teach practitioners. I don't practice medicine, and I don't want to stand up here and claim that I do, but I hear what the frustrations that you're inheriting.
It's funny because Kathy was just telling me about this before we started. She just said that this is what's happening. These doctors are dropping people, and then these other doctors are inheriting them. So I think she and many others here definitely appreciate what's, what you're dealing with. I think we have time for one more question, then we just have a couple more quick speakers. And if we did not get to, there are a lot of folks here tonight who can still talk to you. We've got, raise your hands around the room. We've got a number of people who are very well versed in this issue and can answer some more questions for you tonight.
Hello, my name is Karen Loy. I work, I'm a school-based clinical therapist for ACC. And my question is about really getting into the schools and helping the kids, starting from like elementary and up to high school. A lot of my clients now are high schoolers, and they tell me that they take, they smoke marijuana or, you know, they pop pills to make them feel good. You know, it makes them feel comfortable. And some of them say it actually relaxes them, and they're able to do their classroom work and their homework. So, you know, I was thinking that maybe it would be a good idea to have one of you guys, or if we all get together, both in Detroit, because I work in schools in Detroit, and I was working in Dearborn in Austin schools. But what I'm saying is that, have you ever thought about really coming out and educating the kids on why it's not a good idea to use marijuana or other drugs to simply help you relax and feel comfortable, that there's a better way, a better choice? You know, when I talk to them, I try to tell them this, but I think it would be a good idea to have actual, someone like the young man that stood up here and told his story. You know, somebody that can actually come out and really let the kids know that if you start out here, it can only get worse, it will not get better. Pretty soon, you're using harder drugs and harder drugs, and then before you know it, you don't even want them, and just scare them off in the space somewhere. So what do you think about that?
Well, I'm just going to start it and then see who else wants to join in. But I know, for example, DEA has the movie Chasing the Dragon that's been shown in a lot of schools. Contact them to try and get it in your school. I think that's a, I mean, it's a very powerful film. That's one option. And I know they get out to, you know, various schools, but it's hard because there's so many schools, there's so many children to reach, right? Does anyone want to talk about outreach? Maybe?
Yeah, definitely. If you would like, I'd speak to you after. And we can definitely come to your schools. We have many mentors that are willing and capable to share their stories and help out with the youth, of course, because they need an example, they need a hero. And they need to somewhat get a picture, an idea of what can happen or it will happen.
I want to thank you all for being here tonight with us. This is the first in a series that we are going to bring to the culture of our community. And I look at you, I'm Hussein, I'm in Karajuni, and Father Shalbou, and Father Boji, you are the pillars in the community. You have to reach out to your constituents, your parish members, to tell them about this epidemic and the need for education. Our culture unfortunately is a culture of shame and denial, and the parents do not want to face the reality that they have problems with their kids. So we need you to pass the information. We develop a package in English and Arabic. It's 101 to know about the drugs, if your kids are using the drugs, and to educate them. Many of our community members are new refugees, and they don't know what's going on. The kids are leading the parents, and the parents do not know how to deal with the problems. So it is your role, Imam Hussein, and Father Shalbou, and Karjoni, that we need to make sure that you reach out to the community members and tell them about this epidemic. These are the pamphlets we have, no matter how many copies you need, they are available at ACC. Reach out to your members and give them this package. If they don't read English, we have the Arabic version. It is done professionally. It illustrates exactly what kind of drugs, how do they look, what color, et cetera. So please make use of the documents and pass it around to the parish members and to your constituents. And we are open, ready to help you with any issue you might be facing. I want to thank all our panel members and to thank our staff, and thank you Amy and Kathy, and to welcome all the law enforcement agencies who are with us tonight, and all the participants in this conference or town hall meeting, and our hero, my hero, Chief Haddad, who is the backbone of this planning committee, and he was pushing and pushing to have it actually take place at ACC and to reach out to the community. I want also to thank our staff who worked so hard to put this simple town hall meeting together. ACC is available, our doors are open, our professionals are here to help with any questions. I want to thank our board members here with us tonight and to ask us if you need more information, please do not hesitate to do so. We are available, our staff are professional, our medical team are available, our also behavioral health programs are in every county, and our staff do speak bilingual and they are trilingual. So make use of us. Do not hesitate to call on us. Thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you, our speakers, Wayne State University School of Psychiatry, we reach out to you and to UFM. Dr. Jony, thank you for being here with us tonight too. So we, I think we are ready to this, right?
Oh, yeah, we just are going to have a few closing remarks from Waleed, but I just want to thank.